Good morning. I'm calling to order the meeting of the LaPorte County Commission for Wednesday, September 4th. We're all going to have the pleasure of allegiance. After that, could we have a moment of silence? We have had several unfortunate things going on. Jean Shirt, who has been a member of our community and who worked for the county and also for the fair board, he passed away for the victims of the mass shooting in Odessa, Texas, for the victims of the horrific boating accident of California, and for the victims of Hurricane Dorian. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Rule call, Madam President.
Commissioner Cora.
Present.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Present.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Consideration of the agenda?
Wanting to approve the agenda as presented?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And consideration of the approval of the minutes from the meeting of August 21st?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consideration of claims, Madam President.
This week, we have payroll ending August 30th, 2019, in the amount of $1,221,885.05 and miscellaneous claims in the amount of $1,2,418.99. Both to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public comment. Anybody from the public who would like to address?
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street. Went to the LaPorte County Board of Election meeting last week. It seemed like nothing got accomplished. And I just want to know where you guys stand with the early voting being moved to the trustee offices in Michigan City. And also want to kind of offended by one of the commissioners' comments. First of all, he says he's the only full-time commissioner. I guess, I don't know what you two guys, I don't know what you guys do, but he said he's the only full-time commissioner, and that kind of confused us too in Michigan City. We know, we want to know what he mean by that, but when you bring dogs to the polling place and police officers to the polling place, I don't know, I don't have no control over those people, but it seemed like they playing a waste card. I'm offended by your comments to me and your, or your response to my comments. It's obvious, you only bring dogs to the polling place for one reason. And even when they asked to leave, they put the dogs in the police car and they just barked all night, all day until the election was over. People are intimidated, and we shouldn't feel that way in Michigan City. And if you want to know something for firsthand, instead of listening to the hearsay and what they say, why don't you get off your behind and come to Michigan City?
Mr. McCormick, you need to be respectful, okay? Yeah, thank you.
Dennis Matheny, 6757 West 450 North.
Morning.
Michigan City, how you doing? I would like to make a little comment on, on the last gentleman. Number one, I don't think dogs do belong at the polling place. I voted for 50 years and never seen him there before until this election. I think it's wrong. Second of all, Indiana code states that there's no police officer supposed to be in the polling places within 50 foot, no different than us. So that was stated at your meeting too by Amber, which I got the information and gave to her when I was on that group looking for polling places. Now, to the agenda.
Before we go further, I want to thank you and Mrs. Amber Poff for looking into options for other polling places because the superintendent of Michigan City Area Schools, Dr. Easton Watkins, had requested that we move the polling places away from the schools. So I want to thank you for investing some of your personal time in doing that.
I'm retired, I got nothing but time.
Thank you.
The other thing was, since you brought that up, there is an Indiana code also that states the schools shall allow polling in those schools. So it doesn't matter what they want, it's what the state code says shall. So if you wanted to keep them in the schools, you have that right, and you guys make that decision. You commissioners make that decision. I don't want to say guys, I know there's one lady on.
Yeah, so they're familiar with the code and all that, but since they have requested, if we find suitable places, we would like to, to look into that and make that happen. So that, that's what we are trying to do.
That's entirely up to you.
Yeah, thank you.
I would like to, I'd like to request, if you could, go to voting centers next election. I think it saves money and it'll be less confusion on the people that come to the polling places. I've worked two polls, and someone would come in five minutes after six and say, "Well, I went to the polls that I've always voted at, and now they changed it." So if we would, if we could keep not changing it, it would make it a lot easier on the people running. Number nine on your list here, consider travel to Niagara Falls for Mike Schultz. I think that ought to be denied, and only because of the new business, considering expert appraisal services. I think if he's going to have someone do the appraisals, why does he need to go get another education? I think he's got enough education, he's been in there long enough. Just my opinion, I'm just asking as a taxpayer, if you could please consider to revoke that. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Public comment.
So here we are, Phyllis Parks.
Good morning.
118 Sagamore Parkway, LaPorte. And we're so happy that you let us have the tour of the barn coming up with the Indiana Barn Foundation. It's going well out there, Larry's doing well, there's a little bit more to get done, but it's really shaping up. And so it's coming up quickly, and so Steve is going to do some highlights.
Yeah, hi, Steve Jensen, 6718 West 50 South. Good to see you guys, and thank you so much for your cooperation and working with us since the inception of this, back, was it four or five years ago? I don't know how familiar you are with the Indiana Barn Foundation, this is relatively a new organization. Just, just a quick excerpt here. In the fall 2013, an article was running in the Indy Star talking about the current state of Indiana barns. And it said, the news was bleak, there was around 20,000 wood barns that still stood compared to 30,000 a decade ago. So as many, just as a tenth of those barns are left in, in Indiana. So Indiana has more barns per square mile than any other state except five. And so incentives are kind of lagging behind to try to repair these things. So this is really, really big, what you guys are allowing us to do insofar as the old dairy barn. It's a really, really cool thing that the barn, the county extension office, the fairgrounds, that's like an anchor for the agriculture part of this county. You know, I think we're roughly 50% agrarian in this county. We're the second largest county in the state of Indiana. So it's, I think we're setting the precedent here, and that's why the Indiana Barn Foundation wants to kind of showcase our area. Those guys are, they're a 501(c)(3), they, they have grants to rehab old historic barns. And they just want to educate, they're looking to, for future generations, and they wanted, they want to put educational programs, workshops, educational materials, and surveying and documenting for existing barns. So this is who these guys are and what they are, what they see. There's, there's like, I think, three barns in this county for this tour coming up, a couple, well, one church, the Carmel Church in our county. So it's a great showcase. I mean, we got guests coming into our county, and we're laying the red carpet out, and the folks that have these other barns, you know, they're taking it upon themselves. You know, to me, it's like the lighthouses, the covered bridges, and these are things that we see in broad sight that are just disappearing every day. So, you know, and I really want to thank Phyllis for, you know, we needed someone to say, "Look, let's take this thing," and I didn't see it at the time, but boy, as time goes on, we're just looting these things all the time. So it's, we're really, really grateful for you guys. It says here, "Indiana barns have stood as a silent testament to the hard work and resourcefulness of those who settled this land before us." We have a responsibility to care and preserve our heritage now, and so we're the stewards here, and thanks for kind of.
Thank you for coming and making that statement, and thank you for taking interest in the barn. And for the people who are watching on the television, would you like to repeat as to when this event will happen?
Yeah, sure. So the last Saturday in the month of September, September 28th, it's going to be from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So where we're starting this is at the museum, and that's kind of our kickoff spot. There'll be tickets sold there, there'll be tour maps set up. That's going to come right down from the, we can view the round barn there, come down 18th Street to Mike Alt's barn, and there'll be maps as we go there. He's feverishly working, get his barn up and going. They'll, from there, come to our barn, our barn, the county barn.
Sorry.
Yeah, we've taken a passion to this thing.
That's okay. Understandable.
From there, we're going to come down to Forester, and there's an old barn there, Mark Kerth has that barn, and then the Carmel Church, it's on 50 South, that's a national, we're putting that on the National Historic Register. From there, a couple barns in our neighboring county, Porter County, so, and there'll be, Billson said each, each spot, there'll be history about those barns, and so we're really excited about it. You know, guys, we're having, from what they've said, we're going to have between 400 and 500 people come to this thing, and throughout the state of Indiana. So, guys, we're just really proud that, that, you know, they would recognize us, and again, just for your cooperation has been really well appreciated.
Thank you.
And the guys that, the highway department, maintenance department, a big thank of gratitude to those guys.
Yeah, we'll pass it on to Larry and his team.
One remark, if there's any information for press release, we'd be happy to help with that, to make sure that the word gets out to the newspapers and social media, et cetera.
We have a hard time. We all kind of complain about the audio in here. Now, what was that, Jill?
I said, if there's a way that we can help you get the word out through social media or through press releases, if you can get that information to Diana, we can put that together and help with that.
Yeah, I think we got some audio feeds coming up from Fort Wayne. If that's possible, you know, can maybe get those to you, Stan?
Sure.
Is that possible?
Okay, great.
With that many people, you're going to be like on a bus tour or something?
No, no, it'll be individuals, and probably at any one time, there would, we're saying maybe 10, 12 cars at a time.
They come and go, and that's the way we all have them see the barn inside, maybe five at a time.
But my concern was that where you turn in to go where the barn is, well, even also where the, that whole stretch along there, and we've had several accidents, if you're going to have a whole lot of cars, you may want to coordinate that with the sheriff because it's kind of a bad corner there, and, you know, when people are coming around the corner at like 80 mile an hour, it's, it's almost been rear-ended there before getting into the museum.
Yeah.
So you got to be careful with that.
The gates will be open, so they can drive in, obviously, to the.
Well, thanks for what you do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment, anybody else from the public? Thank you.
Thank you.
Louis Spear, 6434 South Third Line Road. And I'm just going to give a short, you know, informational, giving you information about what's going on in Lloyd Boulevard. I've given you the, the well drillers, the law, you know, how their, the Indiana law pertains to well drilling. On this project out there, they're putting in 40-foot, 12-inch well casings, steel well casings that they're dewatering. It's all covered in here, I will not go through it, it's for you people to read. When I first brought this up at the drainage board meeting on the 13th of last month, they had 18 of those casings in the ground. Since then, they pulled all of those 18 casings and did not seal the shaft as they pulled. That's allowing the contaminated surface water reach the, you know, the bottom well water layer. And this, it really upsets me because of the fact that the city has contaminated wells up on Lincoln Way. They don't care about their wells, but I do care about the Spear Farm and the wells that will be put in there in the future. If the county attorney hadn't interfered with the drainage board's unanimous decision to shut the pumps off on the 13th, since then, they, now they have 18 more protrusions into the ground. The wells are, you know, they're not pumping right now. I don't know if it was IEDM or the DNR that shut them off, but they are not pumping right now. I'm not going on to the, where they're discharging from the basin, for the simple fact that when I was out there, IEDM called me, I believe, Monday, yeah, Monday morning, excuse me, Friday morning, and he said he was on site, he wanted me out there to explain the situation. I was approached by two, we were approached by two, when I got out there, we were approached by two city patrolmen. This turned into a one-hour, they were going to arrest him and also arrest me. This has gone too far. If you'd shut, you know, allowed that to happen, this altercation with the cops would not have, you know, wouldn't have happened.
Mr. Rosinsky is on the drainage board, and he's already working on it, and I think you've had that set off now.
Well, we had a unanimous decision to shut the pumps off, which the drainage board supposedly has that authority, but the city has chosen to ignore that authority, and they kept pumping. And also, they don't have an IEDM permit to be pumping.
But now they've stopped.
Well, what Louis has told me is that they have stopped. Now, there is a drainage board meeting Tuesday, and I understand that I'm expecting possibly IEDM to be there, the people from the family conservancy district south of the Spear Farm, they'd been pumping water into their conservancy without a permit. Unbeknownst to them, they were asking Louis, "We wonder where all this water's coming from?" It's coming from the pumps that the city has on Lloyd Boulevard.
They never, I met with one of the ladies that's on the conservancy trust, and she also works with the Fish and, works for the Fish and Wildlife Service.
So please make sure you attend the next drainage board meeting.
Oh, I know. But I'll tell you what.
Mr. Friedman, did you want to comment on?
Sure, just briefly. As you know, Mr. Spear, I went ahead and wrote the city attorney and requested that there be a stop work order imposed. What we did not want was a legal action filed against the city. We were hoping to avoid that, and in fact, after providing the request for the stop work order, I believe the pumps were shut off the next day. So, you know, we understand, and hopefully you also go to the Board of Works and the city council.
They have to come to the drainage board, they have the.
Okay, well, I understand, but it's the city, it's a city project, it's a city project being conducted within the city limits. And because the county was seeking, we were seeking to avoid legal action against the city, we requested in good faith that there be a stop work order imposed, and to my knowledge, the pumps were shut off the next day. I think Mr. Rosinsky's been working on that as well, and, you know, we're doing what we can.
Okay, what I'm telling you is when they said that they were going to shut the wells off, return the pumps off, they redirected into the basin. Once it goes in the basin, there's an 18-inch pipe running to pump the water right, still pumping it into the legal drain.
One of the things we've said to the city is that they need to make very clear, when there is a project like this, they do need to give notice to the drainage board, because I would agree with you, and I think, I don't know if you saw the letter from the city attorney in response to my letter? Have you seen that?
No.
Well, I'll make sure you get a copy. If you'll give me your email, because the city acknowledged in response to my email that they do it, that the drainage board should be notified in, in context like this. So if you'll give me your email, I'll make sure that you get a copy of the city attorney's response to me.
But the point is, the drainage board had the authority and exercised the authority to turn the pumps off. We now have 36 protrusions going into the deep water system there, and that is right next to the Comette, our county site, where there is a plume, it's a 100-year restricted site. And that water, you know, that contamination is right there.
As I understood it, Mr. Rosinsky's intent in making the motion to the drainage board was not necessarily to seek an injunction, but to get a stop work order. What we did was get essentially a stop work order. But if you would, please provide to Diane your email, so that I can get you a copy of the city attorney's response to me.
Give it to the drainage board, obviously, from the drainage board. I dealt with the cities for 40 years, Shaw, and all it has been is one lie after another after another.
Let me get your copy.
They built in every law, including every one right here. You need to take care of that because you're leading the whole county out in a real dark area. And I'll tell you what that is, people left their asses hanging out about 10 feet. Somebody's going to start copying.
Appreciate your comments, but get me the email so that I can provide you a copy.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Public comment, anybody else from the public who would like to comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the department head comments. Are there any department heads who would like to comment? Any department heads? Any department heads? All right, we'll move forward to request, consider permission to travel to IAAO conference in Niagara Falls. You know, Mr. Matheny had made a, in the public comments about this particular conference. I did get a call from Mr. Schultz, unfortunately, he could not be here today because he had another commitment, but he did mention that there were some newer standards that were being implemented, and it would help him get the education credits he needs for his Level 3 certification, and there is money in his training budget.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. Old business, any old business. Seeing none, new business. Consider expert appraisal services agreement for county assessors office by Team Consulting LLC. I think Mr. Schultz, as I mentioned, could not be here. Ms. Friedman, have you?
Yes, I had an opportunity to review it, there's a particular appeal that he, the assessor believes this, this particular consulting, it's for a limited use and a limited purpose and a particular appeal, and we reviewed the contract and are comfortable recommending it to you. He's got money within his budget to cover this particular agreement.
Okay, great. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item is consider HealthLink dental services contract for juvenile services center.
Yes, I believe Ms. Robel could not be here. I think, I think she was talking about her assistant able to come. We've reviewed the contract, this is again, a limited contract, but for HealthLink to provide dental services at the juvenile center, it's with the recommendation of LaPorte Hospital as well. It's within their budget, and I believe Ms. Stallworth has reviewed it as well, and so we're comfortable.
I had an opportunity to review it also, it's a very simple contract.
Yes, it is.
For monthly, one visit a month by the dentist to the juvenile.
That's correct.
I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Next item is consider GOPay.net at Community Corrections, Mr. Neary.
Good morning, thank you for your time.
Morning.
Essentially, what I'm asking, or we're asking for the Community Corrections is to switch our credit card processing to GOPay.net. I believe EMS uses it, as well as the recorder's office uses that system. The current system that we use charges us fees, this would charge us no fees. And in order to switch over to our new case management system, they're asking that we consolidate all our accounts at one bank and use a service such as GOPay.net in order to process our credit card transactions. So this would number one, eliminate fees, it would also consolidate everything into one spot, and I'd ask, since the commissioners are the ones responsible for signing any type of contracts, I'd ask the commissioners to consider approving this request in order for us to consolidate our financial matters.
And this was something that the state has want, they required you to do that also from what I read.
Right, because they can't, with the new financial software that we have, you can't have two or three different banks, it has to be at one central location. I've talked to representatives for Verizon, and they have shown me, they can show me how to set all that up, and we can consolidate it there. That's where our accounts are at right now.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Consider interlocal cooperation between the city and county regarding county building department assistance for inspections and permitting of the new LaPorte Hospital. Attorney Doug Beechy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our inspectors have some expertise that the city inspectors do not, so LaPorte has for an assist on these inspections. It's already been approved by LaPorte City Board of Works.
Wanting to approve.
Ms. Friedman, do you have any comments on?
As, as Doug indicates, it's been approved on their end, we're comfortable with it. I understand both the county building department, the planning commission is comfortable doing this and assisting in the inspection permitting, so we're comfortable recommending it.
And so you're going to pay a fee for each inspection?
Yeah, great, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consider request of NIPSCO to use fairgrounds for emergency staging area. Good morning.
Tony Stanley, Real Estate Department with NIPSCO. We have sent over license agreement that I believe was reviewed by Mr. Friedman to utilize the fairgrounds in case of emergency catastrophe. It would give us the plan ahead, where we can mobilize, because usually we get help from all over, other counties, other states, and we need somewhere to bring everybody in. It'd be for material storages and trucks and planning to get our customers back into service in a timely manner.
Ms. Friedman, you had an opportunity to review?
Yes, we're comfortable with it, it makes good sense, it's part of the good collaboration between NIPSCO and the county when it comes to emergency preparedness, and so we're certainly comfortable recommending it.
Wanting to approve.
I'm not going to support until I make a few comments. So we want to be good partners with NIPSCO, and I guess as a member of the new fair event management corporation, we're trying to upgrade the infrastructure at the county fair, and there's a lot of electric that is still outstanding. You have that wonderful apprentice center nearby, and we still have not been able to make the connection between your apprentices and the need at the county fairground. That would be a wonderful civic contribution to the health and safety of LaPorte County families and children, and especially our Ag4H community. So if you could bring that message back to your corporation and in exchange for this, being able to be good partners with you, that would be a wonderful gesture.
Okay, we'll definitely look at that, if somebody could send that to me.
Thank you.
That would be great.
I would support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item F, consider engaging Christopher Burke Engineering for preliminary research evaluation of options to remedy and reduce flooding in Meadowview Estates. Ann Wallace.
And just by way of introduction, after the meeting, the workshop that we had, a doctor had asked me to look out there, are there any particular firms that have expertise with this kind of water management? And did some digging, and recall the situation in terms of resolution, it's Strebel Pond in Michigan City, south side of Michigan City, and what that did to deal with water flooding issues over there, the constant problem that homeowners had. And so we, I reached out at your request, and it does appear Christopher Burke Engineering is probably one of the leading firms on water management, so with that introduction, we're going to, thank you very much. Just welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, board, for allowing me to be here today. I have a simple one-page handout that just describes some of the experience of our firm. And just kind of go through that quickly. Kind of in the far left on the top of that page, we kind of described while our founder, Christopher Burke, was completing his studies at Purdue University, he was part of the team that prepared the County Stormwater Drainage Manual in 1981. So that kind of laid the groundwork for consistent efforts with dealing with stormwater drainage throughout counties in Indiana. 1996, Seville staff worked through a legislatively created work group to prepare the Indiana Drainage Handbook that's used throughout Indiana. 2001, we prepared the Midwest Ecological Prescription Burn Training Manual. 2003, the Indiana Dam Safety Inspection Manual. 2010, we helped prepare national certification for the MS4 Municipal Separate Storm Source System Professionals. And then recently, within last year, we issued the Indiana Fluvial Erosion Hazard Mitigation Manual, a statewide project that helps instead of looking at stormwater drainage concerns as spot locations, it's more holistic way to review several miles of drainage, so you're not solving one problem and creating another one downstream. We've been in business 33 years. Between our Indiana, Illinois offices, we have over 260 total staff. Of that staff, over 100 licensed professional engineers, five PhDs. Within Indiana, we have offices locally in South Bend and Crown Point, and main office in Indiana, Indianapolis, so we have about 50 staff in Indiana, and the rest of the staff is in Rosemont and other satellite offices in Illinois. What we've submitted to the commissioner for your consideration would be, in order to quickly be able to respond to and provide some services regarding specifically to the Meadow View Estates subdivision, subsurface water problem and drainage, we're proposing for the commissioners to consider what we refer to as the on-call professional services agreement. So that would create an agreement structure whereby the county would review our general terms and conditions, make sure everyone's in agreement with those, and then at some point in time, if the county would look to engage us for services, that framework would always be there, and we would submit basically proposals to do tasks as assigned by the county, and that would be approved by the Board of Commissioners before we would go forward. So we're just trying to look for a way, provide a way. We have these agreements with many municipalities and counties, similar to the agreement we have with St. Joe County to the east and many municipalities that we work with. So the on-call services is just a framework to be able to engage us, and then if a need arises to engage us, we would submit a short test summary sheet proposal that identifies our estimated hours, costs, and schedule to do that work, and specifically what we would do. For the condition with Meadow View Estates, we would propose to meet with the county staff and the neighborhood representatives to get, really understand the history, what's going on there, look at some of the potential geotechnical reports that the county might already have, look at the options the counties looked at, do a quick search for potential grant opportunities to fund some of the options, and then recommend next steps for mitigation. So this initial work is to kind of really get a sense for the issues there. Christopher Burke Engineering, our firm, has longstanding history relationships with expert groundwater geotech firm, Testing Services Corporation. We've also used other geotech firms, so depending who might have done geotech in the past, or if there's a preferred geotech firm the county likes to work with, we can work with them. So there's many resources we think available to us to be able to help in this manner. So that's.
Thanks for coming in, and thanks for sharing some of your expertise here. Now, we, all three of us, met with the neighborhood group, and we had a work session, and many of our county officials were present, including a surveyor who gave us many potential options with varying degrees of certainty whether it'll resolve the problem or not, and also the costs differ quite a bit. And so I remember many years ago, Mr. Roger McKee took me on a tour of the Strybel Pond and showed me the extraordinary work you had done at that time, and what a relief it brought to the flooding in the neighborhood that it affected. So I'm glad you're participating in this, and hopefully we'll find, I think the key is to find the right way of remedying it, and also to find the funding source for that. So hopefully you'll be able to make that happen. So with that.
Any comments?
So, Mr. President, I would have a comment. I am aware of the work that Mr. Wallace did on the Strybel Arm, and the relief it brought to an entire quadrant of Michigan City for flood insurance and flooding basements. I guess what we are concerned about, there is a lot of in-house knowledge among county officials who have been, who are drainage experts and have certain levels of expertise. But when we're throwing a lot of high-dollar amounts around, we want to be sure that what we do is something that, first of all, is as affordable as possible, and second of all, that uses the most current expertise around flood management. When you're talking about aquifers, and aquifers running very close under people's basements, that's a huge concern, because that's not something that can be managed easily. So I think it's certainly smart for us to bring in somebody who is a professional and has, you mentioned all the staff members, I'm sure, expertise that can help this neighborhood. There were 35 families. It was a really poignant public session we had with them, because we heard about people running pumps 24/7, 365 days a year, $400 monthly NIPSCO bills, no offense to NIPSCO, but that's not even, that's just to run the pumps. That's not to heat their home or to cook. And, you know, just from a citizen's point of view, that's just hard to imagine. And so we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and that it's within our budget, and something that we can. So I was especially interested in the fact that you talked about grants and your ability to scour state resources for ways to assist LaPorte County.
So thank you. Just quickly response, we're not looking to duplicate any of the work that's already been done. It's mainly to kind of look at the body of work, see if there's any missing data points. If there are, find out the way to collect those to make sure that the recommended path moving forward would solve that problem most effectively.
Perfect.
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that closes it. Commissioner comments. Mr. Matheny.
So I have a few comments, but the first one I think we probably need to deal with as a commissioner, and that's the issue of voting. Some of us were present at the election board meeting on Friday, and we heard the election board talk about it being the commissioner's responsibility to, by statute, to name locations for voting. And so that's a concern, because the way the counties always work is that the election board brings us a slate of locations, and we basically approve their recommendation. So on May 15th, we passed a resolution asking the election board to come up with alternative voting locations for nine precincts that are currently voting in the Michigan City Area Schools. And we requested a special committee, and Dennis and attorney Amber Poff have worked really hard to bring us locations. Some of those locations may work out really, really well, others are gonna be a bit of a stretch. But while Mr. Matheny makes a really good point about Shell and May, and I heard that, we do want to go to places where voting is a welcomed opportunity. We want to make sure that it's, those are good locations for our citizens, because voting should be an easy thing. It should not be a difficult thing. We talked about at that meeting on Friday, barriers to voting as far as I'm concerned, whether they are dogs, security systems, et cetera. I keep thinking, and I mentioned on Friday about my 92-year-old mother who looks forward every year to voting. She puts on her nice outfit, she puts on her earring. She's 92 years old, she uses a walker, but she votes. To her, it is an important American tradition that she sees as a privilege. That's not just my mom, that's everyone's mom, that's everyone's brother, sister, anyone who can vote. We need to make it easy to vote, not more difficult. So when Michigan City Area Schools asked us to not vote in their buildings, I think that that's a signal to us that that voting is not working well for whatever reasons. I was distressed when I saw those pictures of dogs. I will tell you, that is not okay. I voted in Michigan City since I was 21 years old when I moved here, and there has never been a use of animals in any neighborhood. There is no need for it. Mr. Marzinski talked about riots at the polls. Are you kidding me? That is absolutely absurd and offensive. There has never been any disturbance at any polling place in Michigan City, and in fact, in LaPorte County, to my knowledge. Even during the '60s, when there was turbulence in our neighborhoods across the country, LaPorte County did not have any disturbances at any polling places. So I'm offended, and that's not okay by me. So, moving on. Because Superintendent Barbara Easton Watkins requested that we move, what I would suggest is that, based on our resolution of May 15th, when all three commissioners agreed that we were going to request polling place locations from the election board, I would ask that the election board abide by that resolution and immediately forward us nine suggested new locations so that we can approve it at our next meeting on September 18th, and be sure that we blasted out to the voters so that they know, if they are at a different polling place, they will know how to get there. You know, I did hear the messaging from the election board that they were concerned about us changing polling places, but I will tell you, our voters are smart people. We use social media, we use the News Dispatch and the Herald Argus, the radio, WFM, WIMS, all the radio stations, WCOE, they will get the word out to voters, and our voters will know how to find us on Election Day in November. I also want to talk about a resolution that was made some years ago by former Representative Scott Pilat. We noted that, his comments, in our May 15th resolution. He raised it over five years ago, when he talked about that the clerk's office needed to find alternative locations for those 30 days of early voting. And while we may not be able to do that this November, I do think we need to think about that. In one of our polling places, 401 in Michigan City, there was 4% turnout. That is not okay. We need to do whatever we can to make it an easy process for voters. Putting barriers up for them is not, is not good citizenship, and it's certainly not, I'm not interested in having that happen on my watch. Scott Pilat talked about that you shouldn't have to be stripped of your items to be able to vote, you should not have to face detector, metal detectors. My 92-year-old mother, or your 92-year-old mother, shouldn't have to shake out her purse and have it inspected by our respected sheriffs. They have lots of better things to do than look at grandma's purses. And so I think we need to do whatever it takes to make sure that this November, we move the polling places out of the schools as best we can, using the suggestions that Mr. Matheny and Ms. Poff came up with. And then next, next cycle, we make sure that we do whatever we can to set up early voting in places that are handicap accessible, easy for people to get to, and are safe, and have plenty of parking and plenty of accessibility. So that would be my comment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marzinski, commissioners, any comments?
Yeah, I understand people only hear what they want to hear, but we've stated, I've stated at least twice now, these commissioners have no authority over the state police, the sheriff department, or the city police. If they're showing up someplace, it's at the direction of the police department, not the commissioners. Apparently, there's a reason. And I didn't say anything about having a riot, said they might be there to avoid a riot. Police departments govern that. We don't. And as far as the check the minutes, when you said all three commissioners agreed on that, this commissioner was not here. I was out of state at a different meeting. So let's get the record straight. Next week, September 11th, that's a week from today, then declared Patriots' Day, the 18th anniversary of the attack on our country, and asking that everyone fly their flag at half-staff from dusk, from dawn till dusk. See, last week, August 20th, I had a visit from John Kenworthy, who is the Military Legislative Assistant for Senator Braun, just happened to stop in my office to talk about veteran affairs, and also wanted to talk about some of our county things going on, like our computer hacking. And on the 27th, Congresswoman Jackie Walorsky stopped in to talk about the same kind of stuff. So nice to see that they're in touch with our county, I want to know what's going on. And on August 30th, I attended the One Region Meeting at Nice Horse Building in Merrillville with Governor Holcomb. Very nice presentation. He talked about the double track, talked about the trails, the walking and hiking trails, which, of course, we have a very huge part of, in job training. It was a very nice presentation, all in all. I continue to work on the golf carts with our attorney, the golf cart ordinance. We've got sample ordinances from Stark County, Elkhart County, and Whitley County, all really good stuff to go with. We'll make sure we want to do this right, so we'll continue to work on it. And I'm hoping we're gonna have something here before too very long. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. A couple of comments from me regarding the voting. I did talk to Don Glossinger this morning from the Michigan City Public Library. They're doing some remodeling, so he said this year it will not be possible to do it, but he's going to bring it up with his senior team and see whether it can be done next year. And so we'll keep working on that, and that's for early voting. And then for.
About what?
About using the public library for early voting.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And then I also left a message for Ms. Fonda Owens, who was not there, but I'm gonna follow up with her to see if the LaPorte Public Library can be used for early voting. But I, looking at the logistics, probably that may not happen this year, but at least we'll continue the conversation and see if we can make it happen next year. And I also would like to bring to everybody's attention, there are several states who do voting by mail, and I don't know why we can't simplify this whole thing and just vote by mail. And probably we need to look at possibly having a resolution and sending it to the state and see if they can consider doing it by mail. I also attended a meeting that was organized by the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte regarding infant mortality, and it was very well attended by various agencies that address this particular concern in our county, and it was very well organized, and we'll continue to work on improving our infant mortality. Regarding the golf carts, I thank you for working on it, and as long as we can make sure that there is public safety that's taken into consideration, I think we'll be able to bring a good ordinance in place, and that will make everyone happy and also keep public safety as a main concern. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks, and.
Mr. President, I have one more comment to make. So I'm not going to talk about the various meetings that I've gone, I've attended in the last couple of weeks, but I would like to talk about something that a citizen brought up, because it is on my mind, and it has bothered me. You know, our culture tends to get facts and truths kind of mixed up with fiction, and so the strategy of repeating an untruth over and over until it becomes normalized and seems like it probably is true, seems to be a practice that we see happening in Washington. We see it on the media, whether you listen to conservative media or liberal media, it happens a lot. So we kind of have a culture of blurring the lines between fact and fiction, and so it's shown up in LaPorte County, and I have to say, it's getting under my skin. So I'm in my ninth month of being commissioner, and I have tried to practice what I have always done in my public service. As some of you know, I've been in and out of public service pretty much my entire life. I started out as a school teacher, which, as you know, is public service. And I've been involved in public service as either a volunteer, a board member, a city council member, a mayor, and now as a county commissioner. So when I hear things happening over and over, and I hear untruths being repeated and being considered factual, it kind of starts to bug me. So commissioners do best, as do all politicians, when they put their egos aside when they walk in, and they do the people's work. To me, that's the most important, and it is such an honor to be an elected official. So being civil and being collegial, whether you agree or don't agree, has been something that has been very important to me throughout my political career. There were times when I was in Michigan City on the city council, Tommy Alibiso, so some of you know his temperament back in the day, he was difficult. But you know what? When we finished arguing about whatever issue we were arguing about, we went out, we shook hands, had a cup of coffee together, and sometimes an adult beverage, and we made it. We went on to the next issue. So that's something that I think is really important. It's a promise that I make to the people to serve in their best interests, and so it's with dismay and really regret, and as you can see, I put some comments on a piece of paper so I wouldn't get distracted. I have to take Commissioner Marzinski to task over posturing about being a full-time commissioner, which he repeats over and over, and has done so for the nine months I've been here. He got on this bandwagon. He got on this bandwagon again on Friday in front of a group of citizens, and when they all turned around and looked at me, I knew I couldn't just keep taking it on the chin and ignoring it, and being a good girl, and being a lady, and being nice, nice, and nice. So, I'm not going to be very nice about it. I'm going to bring it up and say, that's not okay. The inference that's being made, the untruth per se, is that if you aren't sitting in the Commissioner's office, you mustn't be working. That if you aren't sitting in the Commissioner's office, you're not doing your job, and in fact, you're not doing any job. And that's not both untrue, but it's also disrespectful to the two other people who serve on the Commission, regardless of our political parties. The job of Commissioner has, in Indiana, across the state of Indiana, except for Indianapolis, always been considered a part-time position. Mr. Gonder, who had this job before me, and Mr. Brochacek, who had this job before me, who were Republicans and who were male, also had full-time jobs for which they supported their families. They did a good job on this Commission. So, when Mr. Merzinski, my colleague, continues to posture about being a full-time Commissioner, I think that's great. Goodie for him. That's great. He's at a phase in his life where he is retired, and he certainly, obviously, does not need a full-time income, which none of us do. Mr. Merzinski, I appreciate your service, and like most of the people in Lepore County, we appreciate the extra time you give because of the phase of life you are in as a retired person. Citizens should know that Mr. Merzinski is able to be here in his office, 8:00 to 4:00 Monday through Friday, and for that, we appreciate that. I'm not going to put that down. That's a great thing that he's able to do. But for your other two Commissioners, let me talk about something different. So, I worked virtually for a company out of Boston for seven years. I saw my boss maybe this many times in those seven years, but I talked to him every day, I text him every day. We had meetings, virtual meetings, using Zoom, excuse me, Zoom and other technologies to make sure that we were connected as a team. I trained people in New York, in Colorado, in Birmingham, Alabama, using the computer. It was amazing. I stayed in touch with those people, and I think I did a pretty good job. Commissioner Cora and I work for you, as well as does Mr. Merzinski, and we are available at all hours of the day and night. We use contemporary work habits, not work habits of the '70s where you have to sit and wait for people to show up. We use things like cell phones and laptops, mobile offices, email, text, virtual offices, other offices. I actually have three offices, to make sure that your needs as citizens and the needs of this county are met, and that the county is running well. And while I think it's great, as I said, that Mr. Merzinski is able to be here at State Street, waiting for people to come, and he does a good job, no doubt about it, but proactive work in a contemporary environment can be done in more than just one way. So, Dr. Cora and I are able to attend meetings. When you need our physical presence, we are there. But the citizens get extra value by us being responsive at nights, on our weekends, and we are available wherever there's a Wi-Fi signal or a cell tower. No set office hours, because the doctor and Commissioner Mathias are in. So, now that we've cleared that up, let's put aside this meaningless conversation and get on with the important work, and that's the work of the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Mathias, anything?
I don't think it's the time or place to continue this conversation. I will continue with my work ethic to be here every day. I also work from my phone and from my computer, but I'm also every day. And you, no offense, no offense whatsoever. I cast no disbursement on either one of you when I mention that I am the full-time guy here, but you have no idea of the stuff that goes on every day in this office. How many people come in? How many people call? Diane does an amazing job of taking care of people there, but we do. We get a lot of phone calls, we get a lot of people coming in, a lot of things there. And I continue to work in the fashion that I do. That office has gone through a major transformation. When I first became Commissioner and Diane first came on board, the place was a pigsty, and it was so disorganized. She has done an amazing job of organizing that office, and we do have a lot, a lot of business come through that office every day. So, it's all good. I cast no disbursement on anybody for where you work from. I will continue to be your guy here every day.
Thank you very much. And I, since both of you had some time, I wanted to say something, and I enjoy working with both of you, and we have different styles of functioning, and frankly, if it had not been for email, texting, cell phones, I would not even have run for this office, because I take care of my patients, I'm committed to my patients, and I'm able to do it because of technology, and I'm grateful for that. And last thing I wanted to mention was that this morning, as I usually do, I was on my treadmill, and I was watching the television, and I was listening to an interview by General Mattis, who wrote a book. And so, somebody asked him, what is it that keeps you up at night that you're most worried about? And what he said was that we are in a situation in our country where if we disagree with people, we bash them, and it shouldn't be that way. And so, yeah, and he was very thoughtful in his comments, and so I think as we move forward as a nation, and because sometimes what I see in Washington really discourages me, where I think better things are going to happen in the future, but I think just having civility and congeniality, and people always differ with others on issues, but then they come together and move forward, and I think, hopefully, whatever the good General is saying, that will resonate with everyone. With that, motion to adjourn.
All right.
Support.[1783.83]